Already drunk from Kool-Aid. So, I think this is unethical. I think that anybody that's on a board that's voting for a community ordinance or township ordinance should not be publicly going out and being a special guest for the opposition, so to speak. So, I just wanted to point that out and have it on some kind of record that it's clearly biased and unethical. So, the only thing else is they love that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Your first Douglas Township. Responding to a few comments, I guess I'm about to at least get three minutes in our ordinance because to loosely quote the Winfield Township throw-in attorney the other night, when comments come at the end of the night, he said, "What's the point of debating and talking about this? It's done." That's what you guys did to us today. You made our comments totally useless. You've already done what you're gonna do. And you didn't even give us one minute. And, you know, I don't even know how I'm gonna talk for three, we got three minutes to talk about why there's, why we don't want a 700-foot turbine next to our house. It's gonna create shadow of a dark noise. Sorry, it's pretty emotional. To the person that talks about the leases that I've already done, under 4% of Douglas Township has the tax base as leased for turbines. What about the other 90, over 95% that do not want turbines and have not leased for turbines? Somebody has to start listening to the vast majority of the people in Douglas Township and other townships and certainly Cato Township. As far as the LMAX on not participating, do you guys even think about what that means? You know, I have two properties that are vacant, one I used to live on and one that has a house on that's vacant right now. Do you think about, like, it's, it's not farmland, so if there's no setback to the property line, you've completely stolen my ability to sell that to someone to live on or my relative to live on. You've completely stolen my land rights if, if the noise and the shadow of a dark doesn't go to a non-participating property line. Are you, would I even be able, would anybody even be able to get a building permit for a home there? I doubt it. And if, if they could, then you'd be putting them in harm's way. Robert Rand, a national acoustician, I think that's what they call him, was quoted, has been quoted several times the same, "Distance is the only protection from turbines. Other things have some other protections. Solar panels, well, they make noise too, but, you know, you can plant trees and shade, you know, but distance is the only way to protect us." And you, by taking out LMAX and by making it not burn, by suggesting to take out LMAX or take it away from property lines, you're just, you're moving them a credible, incredible distance toward us. You know, that's not to say that I like the Douglas ordinance as it is, but you guys have just, you just made it way worse. And if they take up your suggestions, which I think they will, because I think they're already going to, you know, then it makes it much easier. And that's why I'm recalling, because we're not being listened to. We are the met vast majority and we're not being listened to. We're being treated like we don't exist, just like we were today. And for anybody who might wanna say that I don't like renewable energy, I do have geothermal at my home and we run a small turbine windmill at our pond for, to feed the fish. So, I do agree in personal renewable energy, there are alternatives to these industrial wind turbines. We do not have to run away because we think they're gonna sue us. That's ridiculous. Our own township attorney, which now we've paid almost $100,000 for, passed 150-foot height limit in his township of Grand Haven. So, he feels that he can defend that, but for some reason, we have to have a 500-foot or higher limit. You know, that should speak volumes to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Joe Anderson, do you mind me asking if you have a lease with Apex or if they give you any kind of payments yet?
I've made that statement here at every meeting. I have no lease. I am not in the footprint.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, um, this is my first meeting, so first time I heard you from me, but thank you. Biggest thing, biggest reason I ask.
I don't have to answer your question.
I understand if I ask.
But I don't mind telling you, I normally say that. I have no opportunity.
The main reason I ask is you'd be the only name on there that isn't getting payments from Apex, so I'd be wondering why you're the special guest. But with that said, the other familiar name is Pat Carr. I think anybody with a conscience can look at, if someone came up to you and offered you $10 million to skew a vote or to make a decision on something, we would all say, you know, that's bribery, that might even be criminal. I don't think there would be a huge debate on it until we get to green energy. Pat Carr, once again, I don't wanna throw him under the bus, but last month, I keep hearing that there's more and more leasers that it was Pat Carr that signed up. It's not Apex Power, it's not Brian O'Shea, it's not people employed. Some reason it's Pat Carr. Dan Harris was the big one for the longest time, but he's a employee by the way, so I, I think that makes sense. I question why the county commissioner is selling leases. But with that said, usually you follow the money. Cato is a big discussion. My name is Jerry Quayle, I'm from Cato Township. And Cato Township, we are debating allowing 400-foot wind turbines in our township. I think that is a crazy number. Apex wants to do 700-foot, that is a crazy number. In Cato Township, I can only have a three-foot fence in my front, front yard. I can only have a six-foot privacy fence in my backyard. It's one thing if the township was more liberal with how the zoning was. If I could put up a 40-foot fence and block the site of the turbine, I'd be, do it. I don't care. Property rights. What, but those property rights end at the property line. So, when I'm stopped looking at it, some of that is a different consideration. Cato and Douglas have similar zoning with a lot of visual rules on, on everything in your house, where everything's gotta be to a certain skew. I'm sure you guys know how the zone works. The county's a little looser than the townships, but these are more particular townships. They're late front communities. In Cato, only half of that is on the proposed project. Out of that half, a quarter of the land is leased to Pat Carr. Out of the remaining three quarters, another quarter is leased to the neighboring township commissioner. You know, there's problems with that. This isn't a benefit for the community, this is a benefit of a small few. As long as those small few have positions in the right spot, you know, these things get passed. I'm surprised we are still talking about this. It is pretty obvious the community doesn't want it. But we still are. So, I'd like to rattle off, so Pat Carr, obviously here to defend some of these numbers, but he has over 1,000 acres leased. With that said, as of today, he should, for this year, he'll have been paid $18,000 for that lease. That's at $6 an acre. Apex proposes and the project goes through, it'll be $35 an acre. So, then with that alone, that's $35,000 a year. That would be, with that, that's just releasing the land. If he gets turbines on his land and based on other projects for 1,000 acres, you are looking at about 10 turbines. So, you get over $20,000 per turbine per year, so that's $200,000 a year for 10 turbines, together $235,000 a year. For the first option of the lease, which is a guarantee 35 years, you're looking at $8 million. The option has a 20-year extension, so then you're at 55 years. At 55 years, that's $12.9 million only Pat Carr is being offered to possibly skew people's votes or opinions. And the only reason I'm saying that, because if anybody is getting that information from Pat Carr, I would question where that information is. You follow the money. It would be a complete different story if he's not getting paid, you know, if he doesn't have a lease, if he doesn't intend on a lease, you know. I would give some appreciation to that with, but I would question anybody who is making big bucks on this. With that said, I appreciate the time that you guys put forward into your, your jobs. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Laura Engel. I was a little worried about I have signed a lease with Apex, so a bit out of the way right away. My husband's family has farmed in Douglas and Sidney Township for a little over 100 years. We've tried to be good neighbors to everybody. When my husband and I signed a lease with Apex, we didn't do it with the idea that we would be enriching ourselves. Our proximity to three different lakes, Clifford, Dickerson, Lake Stanton, probably means that we will never have a turbine. However, we did have a hope that, that responsible leases could be, ordinances could be, could be worked out with the townships so that reasonably priced electricity could be preserved, could be done. And that we could also see some, just like a tax money coming into the county, to the all the different county offices, the sheriff department, particularly the schools. We had that hope. Then when we started going to Douglas Township meetings, because that's where we live, we were kinda discouraged. We, we heard that, that words like referendum, recall, were bouncing off the walls of Township Hall, and they were punctuated by a significant number of maybe F-bombs occasionally being thrown and also pounding of the tables. And, and partly the reason that all this money is being sent on attorneys is that some folks really can't see the reason for having turbines. You know, we were talking about reasonably priced electricity, a couple of the, as I understand, the Elect, the Consumers Power in Detroit had, had said they're gonna be rolling blackouts this year. I think we're going to look at some other forms of energy besides of the fossil fuels. And I don't think it can happen right away. I don't, I don't advocate everybody getting an electric car, but I really do think that we do need to be looking in that direction. And if we don't ever have turbines, then that takes away one source of, of electricity. And I, I think we need to be looking at that. I, I feel that, I sort of representing the greedy farmers of, of Montcalm County, since Pat isn't here to defend himself. But when I think about why the anti-people don't want turbines, and this is in spite of the fact that most of the, most of the information about health, health and safety and welfare is disproved, as well as the fact that property, property values are gonna go down with violent, that has been pretty much disproved too by, by the turbines that contribute to the other areas that they're, that they're, that they're in. So, I think that when you stop and think about who doesn't want turbines, why they don't want them, really what it boils down to is that they don't want to experience the pain and suffering of looking out their window and seeing a turbine. Now, when you think about that, you have to ask who's being selfish and who's being greedy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pounding on tables. No pounding.
Anyone else have something?
Leslie Riden, hi Township. And I thank you for the work that you do, and it is increasingly a thankless job over these years. Quite honestly, I think that we put the cart before the horse. Renewables, wind and solar are not going to provide the baseload energy that we need. And we don't have a means to store that energy when it's sunny, when it's windy. So, the rolling blackouts or brownouts are because we are putting the cart before the horse. When we wanna, when we want electricity and, and flip the light on, the more we get rid of natural gas or nuclear plants or whatever, the state has created a situation where we're faced with problems, potentially, likely, the more turbines and more solar that we have. And I don't know where Ms. Engel has gotten her information, but I think all of our electric is going up because renewables are expensive and they're not productive. And we're all paying for that in, in subsidies and seeing our electric bills go up. And I just, I've, I've said this before, that this is only phase one of the project. And I think a lot of people think I don't know what I'm talking about. I hope we can agree that we don't want to look like Gresham. We don't wanna be surrounded and have turbines everywhere. And, and we are unique. We have a lot of weapons, we have a lot of natural resources to protect. And Gresham is a very different county. With that said about the phase one, maybe my, my verbiage is, is not correct, it's footprint. Okay, this is a quote from the Daily News. This was a question asked of Albert. If this project goes through after 75 turbines are built, is there potential that there would be even more in this county? That was asked by Olivia Bloomstrom. This is Albert's response. Quote, "In this county?" "Perhaps." Young Lord responded, quote, "Perhaps there would be more turbines in Montcalm as a whole, but not within the existing footprint face." My, my verbiage. We're gonna have more turbines than 75. And we are asking our townships, you, the county PC, to please protect us. And we are frustrated when we hear Albert's letter reiterated at a county level, and we're frustrated that we don't have a voice, the majority of the taxpayers. We're frustrated and we're not the only ones pounding on tables. We've been called Nazis, bullies, rebels, pit bulls, you name it. We've been called a lot of things and we're taking a lot of heat because we're not being heard. And we are the majority. And we've not seen the sign of majority. Nobody has referendum, they didn't referendum Pine Townships, they didn't Sydney Townships. We want protections. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you for listening, all of us, and the time this is taking today. I wasn't there to say anything. And then I was gonna talk about heights. I'm gonna cut that really short. And as a response to Mrs. Engel here, I'm going to read something different. As far as height quotes, the Washington Monument is five stories taller than a 500-foot wind turbine. We're talking about those. How many Washington Monument-sized structures is reasonable? The River House at Bridgewater Place is 506 feet tall. That's the tallest building in Grand Haven. How many of those should go in Cato Township? Would you want those even 1,500 feet from your homes? Real Lake, Lake property on Devon's Lake? I have health issues. If these go into Douglas, I will not be able to use our cottage because of those health issues. The general number is a, you will lose approximately 30% of your resale value on a property anywhere. This is, this is, no. We won't be able to sell our cottage. There are beautiful places all over Michigan where people can buy a cottage. Nobody wants to go out on a latency industry and yet it's spinning in the sky. These are voices. I spent 40 years of my life supporting recovering rate victims one-on-one. Forty years. I only quit because I couldn't stand to hear one more story. Please understand that I, I can spot someone who is faking it and I can spot people who are genuinely victims. There's a whole new class of people in this country, victims of industrial wind. These are some of their voices. Carrie from Missouri. I can't stress enough how much your world will change. It should never be about what we as humans can tolerate before harm is done. It should be about preserving the peace our wounds already provide. Shelley from Iowa. Have you ever experienced vertigo, nausea to the point of vomiting, excruciating ear pain and pressure along with a constant headache and sleep deprivation? This is some of what I experienced living among industrial wind turbines. Don't tell me industrial wind turbines don't harm. How do I know it's the turbines? The symptoms cease when I leave for a period of time. It is devastating and debilitating. Working in the yard is near impossible. You are exhausted all of the time. It is criminal to place these industrial wind turbines anywhere near humans. We are not sure if we can remain in our home over 40 years. We are devastated. Tanya from Iowa. You don't and you won't. Understand it until you live it. The noise is beyond explanation. We truly thought we would be able to deal with it. We can't. It's a constant horrific unbearable noise. Where do you go at 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night or 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning in the paj, in your pajamas with your pets? It's completely unacceptable that we find the need to flee our home. Charlie from Missouri. My family, I'm sorry, this is not my grammar, it's his writing. My family and myself's lives have been completely devastated and turned upside down. They surround us. They keep us from sleeping at night and drive us crazy by day. They've ruined the equity in our farm that took us 15 hard years to create. They've ruined the marketability of our farm, not that we ever considered selling or moving. Now we have no choice. We just bought a house in town and will be regrettably abandoning our precious home. One last one. Hal from New York. If we knew what would happen, never would we have signed a contract that puts our friends and neighbors through this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else have a public comment?
Laura Engel, Douglas Township. And we own property in Sidney Township too. We live right on the township line. We were to a funeral in Ethica a few weeks ago. A friend of my wife from high school, we asked him about the turbines in his area. He said, "I have three in my backyard and I love them." Said, "After just a little bit of time, you don't even hear them." And we like the taxes that is collected in our area. A cottage on Dickerson Lake within the last month. So, what the asking price of was, it wasn't any fancy cottage, you got this guy build it some year back. The asking price was $240,000. It sold for $40,000 to $50,000 more than that. Property values around Dickerson Lake and Clifford Lake and Lake Stanton are not going down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you speak twice?
Yes, sir.
If you have something.
It's not about wind, wind turbines. I didn't know if there's another, it's my first meeting and I have a topic I'd like to talk about, but it's not about the wind.
Oh.
So, I'm kinda waiting or I'm looking for some direction, so when I'm done here, so...
Can you speak twice? It's my first meeting also.
Sure.
Sure. I was so upset, Lindbergh and Cato Township. I was so upset about the invitation and having members on that as guest speakers that I can, I just, thank you for reminding me. I have also done my research and talked to friends in Merrill, which is part of Gresham County. They were one of the first communities to put in the very first 100 turbines at 350 to 380 feet 11 to 12 years ago. They were promised lots and lots of money. And this particular friend of mine was on the school board and also PTA. And she said, "I'm gonna warn you guys, we never saw one cent of the money that was promised to us." The other thing that she said is, this is convenient and, and similar, the fire chief from that community was happily telling everybody how thanks to the energy company, we can get a brand-new fire engine. And somebody did some work and found out from the Freedom of Information Act that $125,000 for the fire truck was really a grant. And it was put off to the community that it was all because of the money that they're getting from the energy company. I, I don't think it's real. I, I, I think it's a scam. So, I don't think the money is really there, only because people that have already been promised money never saw it. Secondly, from Dan Harris himself, who is a friend of mine, we had a conversation before I joined the group that I'm in. He happily told me that Gresham County was originally supposed to get, in their phase one, 200 wind turbines. That's what was projected to the county. And he boasted they now have 507. And that county, I did my research, is 583 square feet, square miles, sorry. And they now have 705 turbines in that little county. I call it a little county. I fear that that's what's gonna happen if we don't have something in place ahead of time. So, I just wanted to point out the, the opposite of what, what I've been told from somebody that experienced it. They also, oh, Dan also told me that those 100 turbines that were put in town 11 years are now obsolete and they're looking at ways that they can have those removed and replaced with a more effective turbine. So, I think that community is gonna go for even more poor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that trouble?
All right. My name is Jerry Hudson. I live on Tomline, Lake the North End of that, and I wanted to talk about briefly with rodents. I don't think anybody is aware of that, so I'm looking for some direction, what I can do with this. But in 2012, there was a state law that was in effect that nobody's allowed to put a dock in any of the rodent. Well, on our lake, let alone even the county park, right there, there's like at least a lot of docks there, plus docks of all the rodents. And when I went up to Higgins Lake recently, the county actually put signs in front of each one of the rodents letting people know that we have nothing like that. And, excuse me. One of the issues that we ran into is you have the back line, you have the front line, and they're trying to police each other. So, I feel with the signs out there that will help police and give good direction what you're being legal or not. So, I'm looking for help, who I can talk to, whether it's road commission or here, planning commission or...
Call, not this week, cause he's gone, but I would recommend you call down to road commission, talk to Mark Christiansen.
Mark Christiansen, okay. Thank you.
He's the managing director, directing our direction.
Thank you very much.
Tomline.
We've had discussion about it.
Well, part of that's park, park property, public parks property.
Park, it's really much.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I wanna thank you for the residents for showing up here today from these various townships and from Montcalm County especially. I also am concerned that the article that was in Daily News about Richland Township, are they gonna present their proposed ordinance that has passed to this commissioner?
That's the only question I have. You don't know until they send it, right?
Excuse me?
If I could, you're very, to a, um...
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I want to thank you for the residents for showing up here today from these various townships, and from Montcomb County especially. I also am concerned that the article that was in Daily News about Richland Township, are they gonna present their proposed ordinance that has passed to this commissioner?
Is there any questions? Do you all know what Delveryson is?
Excuse me?
If I could, you're very up to the zoning act. You guys have tried to, probably, you've been at it for what, thirty-five years old in Montcomb City. I, I would just like to have you explain why we look at some of these issues and what the zoning act says, and why are we looking at these ordinances at all?
Before you get into that, could I say something, please?
No, you're not.
There's no nameplates, I don't know who people are.
It's because they don't, we don't have any plates for this.
Okay.
She wants to know who you are, you don't have any nameplates.
Oh.
This isn't their meeting.
I think mine's up there.
Yeah, mine's there too.
Mm-hmm.
I'm Mike Scott.
Thank you.
My name. And I will have a copy of what you want to hear, John, but...
Yeah, what he wants to hear is right.
I'm not the real board to make. There's three options for planning commission acts, this planning commission, or two. But the Zoning Enablement Act, and I'm not gonna quote this right, probably, but we are, we are charged by state law, by the zoning enablement, county didn't pass it, we didn't pass it, it came down under that act, that we're required to review land use zoning and offer opinion. We don't vote on anything with the township, it's up to them, we just send our opinion back to the township or the legislature sitting. It's up to them to deal with it. So this board has no authority to change an ordinance, all we do is offer comment, just like you do when you go to the public areas. The other option we have, we can pass a resolution and not deal with these. It's in the act, so it's up to the people what they want to do. I mean, I, I have very disillusioned, I'm gonna tail off just a little bit about what John asked me to do. Six years ago, when we heard about wind coming, possibility, there were two or three companies that were looking around here. We went to the townships, the planning, the planning commission, and they asked to get together and write a common ordinance for the whole. That didn't happen. Everybody went off on their own. So this is why we're getting these six or seven variations of the zoning ordinance for wind that are not uniform. And it's very, to me, I just assume that the townships, townships do make the decision, I just do not get involved now personally, because we have no authority on anything to deal with that ordinance. So...